I'd like to welcome everybody, welcome everybody back to our meeting. Thank you for being patient. For those of you who are waiting for us to complete our executive session. First of all, please join me in the pledge of allegiance. Billy, will you lead us, please?
I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I have one agenda change that is under new business F. Posting a position for food service director. Does anyone else have any additions? Hearing none, may I have a motion? It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carried. Recognitions. I'm gonna start tonight and I would like to recognize the leadership teams for all their budgeting suggestions. Those were very helpful. And I would like to present the certificate of official recognition to Joe Prowl for becoming a Wyoming School Boards Association Certified School Board Member. All right, any other recognitions? Tyler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to recognize one of our seniors this year. She created the Twirl and Dance Studio. They did their final production here a couple of weeks ago in the auditorium. And I just want to recognize how well she did, the group did, and that. And what she has done for multiple students throughout the district. And she, once she graduates, she will be missed.
And that person's name is?
Uh, Celine, I... Remor.
Celine Remor, thank you. Other recognitions? Randy.
Okay, first, I have several, so please bear with me. First, I'd like to recognize the good citizens for the month. Alexis Shengrow, Aria Haley, and Ellie Hespe. Also would like to say thank you and recognize Mayor Owens and the Newcastle Tree Advisory Board. They came out on the 25th and did a little presentation for the kids and planted a new tree for us, which was kind of fun. And they put a little time capsule underneath of it. Also, help, or thank you to Adam and his crew for helping get that all organized and doing the behind the scenes work. And then Caleb Carter and his crew came and did like a little interactive nature post or walk. You've probably seen it around the bus loop where the classes could go out and learn about different nature things. So, we appreciated that. On behalf of all of us, we would like to recognize our school secretaries. We just had School Secretary Day this last week, so we really appreciate all that they do. Also in line with that, it was Lunch Hero Day last week. We have so many days. But we do appreciate every, all of them feeding our kids, so. Um, we're also working through YTOP right now and that takes a whole lot of coordination before we get to this point. So I just wanted to recognize Candace Watt for all the work that she does. She gets our schedules together and makes sure we're all in compliance. And she's with all the kids, testing them who missed a day and need to make something up, so. And then last but not least, Mrs. Whipple and all the students, we had two really great music programs this week. So, and I got lots of great feedback from it, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Bryce.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I kind of have a long list, too. I think it's been, this was a five Wednesday month, so I think it's been a while since we've been together. First of all, I'd like to recognize, there's a like sixty volunteers that go into Making Three or Seventeen Challenge Day, a meaningful experience for our students. And it brings, it's an inter-agency collaborative project. Specifically, I'd like to thank Lisa Williams. She's the principal of Wyoming Virtual Academy out of Lusk and Trooper James Rose. You know, he just lives right over there. He, uh, those two are the head of that committee and really do the bulk of the organizing of this event. And it's just a good positive experience for our, our students and an eye-opening experience for our students. So, thanks, thank you to them. And then would also like to recognize Diane McCormick for all the work that she puts into coordinating our YTOP testing at the high school. I think we only have two kids that have makeup tests remaining, and so we, we almost have everybody tested, which is a good thing. The window ends next week, but so we have a little bit of a buffer zone still to get those kids wrangled in. And then in Mr. Beam's physical science class, the students each year participate in the Wyoming Department of Health's Radon Awareness Campaign, and they make posters for it. And this year, actually, Annika Olson, a freshman, she won the seventh grade to ninth grade division for the, for the state contest. So, thought that was pretty cool for, for Annika, and she did a really nice job on that. You can see that on the Wyoming Department of Health's website if you, if you wanted to get in there and look, but she, it's a nice graphic representation of it. And then last, I haven't seen you since State FFA happened, and so gonna just talk about some of our top performers. That Miss Lep had at State FFA. In extemporane, and I sent these to CeeLo, so you don't have to write them down. In extemporaneous speaking, Callie Christensen was third overall. In employment skills, Presley Fitzwater was third overall. And then receiving a gold in proficiency were Presley Fitzwater, Aiden Butler, Brooklyn Ben Schaff, Julie Morrell. And then receiving a silver in proficiency were Caitlin Blumenthal and Callie Christensen. And then at FFA, there's a science fair version of it, or portion of it. And in science fair, Callie Christensen placed bronze, and Reagan Redding placed silver in the science fair of FFA. And then state degrees were earned by Julie Morris and Aiden Butler, which is kind of a culminating project for seniors in FFA. And then one of the top awards that an FFA student can get is the Star Award. And, and this was the State Star Farmer Award, and Julie Morris received that this year. So a pretty special recognition for her as a senior going out. And so, I know that was a lot. I got them sent to you, so. Thank you.
And I would thank you, and I would say thanks to FFA for getting us these two. We got a list of of all their accomplishments. All right. Tyler.
I'm just echoing quite a bit of what they both said. But I would, I would speak to the YTOP side for Mrs. Bloom and all the work that she's done and the compliance and everything else, and packing snack bags to encourage middle school kids to keep going and all the other things that come with that. And the tech department, of course, because as you guys are very aware, that's been quite an issue and, and they continue to step up and help us. And that's before internet outages. They just, they're always right there helping us get through that stuff. And then the only other additional one that I would add, if you haven't been to the Commons lately, go, go see Sophia Titeman's hard work on, on the memorial fountain that's in the Commons. But if you haven't been there in the last couple of months, you won't recognize it. So she's put in a lot of time and effort and it's, it's looking, I would imagine, like it probably looked when it was new. And that doesn't happen with just good old, without good old elbow grease, so would give her a shout out, too.
Any other recognitions? Dana?
Yes, please. I'd like to recognize, was Mr. Munger selected as history teacher of?
I did. I brought that back to you guys actually a couple of months ago. The, and it was a, it was a, the local VFW and Stan Dixon nominated him for that. Wanted to push both of them actually, because Robert and Sheila work so well as a team. It, it did get in the paper just recently. Mary Stroka from the paper's been wanting to get ahold of them for a while, but in fact, they were going to DC that week. And then parent-teacher conferences and just all the things. So the news is just a little bit behind, but yeah, that, it's very cool.
All right, anyone else? All right, we'll move on. Carrie. Murphy is here to chat us about middle gr, middle school girls wrestling season.
Okay, as much as I don't think I need this thing, is it on? I know. So, I was here, I've talked to administrators at length. I think we kind of talked about it maybe in the fall or late last spring. In the middle school, when we started girls wrestling as a separate team, we ran them at the same time. So, from November to December, we had girls' basketball happening and boys' and girls' wrestling. So, in all the talk between ADs and I think superintendents, it came down to why do girls have to choose between basketball and wrestling? And also, more than that is, it's just what's good for kids. Like if we can get more girls to try wrestling and to build that program for the high school, which is what we do at the middle school for all, all the other programs, why aren't we doing that? So, at our last Northeast District AD meeting, everybody in our district, Big Horn, Tongue River, Upton, Sundance, Hewlett, Morecroft and us, all are really wanting to switch to post-Christmas. So, girls' wrestling would run January to March opposite of boys' basketball. So, girls could also do both basketball and wrestling. The proposal came out of that Campbell County, so Wright in our little district is not on board yet, so I'm not sure where they're, they're gonna be. But I sent out an email asking the girls if this was available after Christmas, where they could do both basketball and wrestling, would they be interested? This was before internet out, outages. But as of today, I had seven yeses, two maybes, and that's sixth and seventh grade. So that doesn't include the upcoming fifth graders. We haven't gone down to talk to them yet. So, you know, a, a team of ten to fifteen is, would be a good team. It would come at a cost, so we would have to have a budget for that for a head coach. It would come at a cost, so we would have to have a budget for that for a head coach. There's maybe some creativity we could do with, with the high school. We would definitely need an assistant coach then, who could travel with the team at all times. We, we got some uniforms last year, so there won't be a huge uniform cost. Officials, so we would run our boys' tournament and then our girls' tournament, so we would, we would have two costs for officials. But I think, and Brad and I have talked in length, I think primarily the thought is it's, it's good for girls. I mean, it, it just is. It's good for kids. Secondary, we don't wanna have to have, well, why do girls have to choose and boys don't?
Do you have a number? A cost number or a breakdown?
So, um, for a head coach, we pay four, forty-two hundred, I estimate. Assistant coaches are twenty-one hundred. So, in a, in the coaches, it would be... I'm doing it in my head.
Sixty-three.
Thanks. Come on, man. Guy, come on.
Do middle school make as much as?
There is already a budget for your coaches for girls wrestling.
And so, and I knew that, so we had one, and then we didn't have one, and I wasn't sure where we were at on.
We have, we do have.
So we do have it. It's already in the budget.
For a coach and an assistant.
Okay.
Okay.
So, yay.
Okay.
Um, so I guess what I would ask for you guys to do is to discuss it. Okay it, um, or not, I guess. And then I would ask CeeLo to post those two positions to be online, so we could get coaches going.
Questions?
So, I guess if we don't do it, we'll be traveling further distances to accommodate during... I mean, 'cause we'll have to go separate ways anyway, won't you, with boys and girls in junior high?
Right, so if we lose, if we lose all competition options besides Wright.
Yeah.
We would then, what I would probably look at is those South Dakota competitions.
Didn't some of them go to?
South Dakota has not. Nebraska changed. Montana, I believe, has changed, but South Dakota has not.
So realistically, you'd still be looking at two buses going separately, okay?
Yeah, so that would be the same. Sean.
So would we have to hire a basketball girl coach, too?
We have a budget for that.
Yeah, and we already, we already have a.
You do?
Uh-huh, yep.
Okay, all right. Just, okay, yeah, got it.
So, everybody but Wright has already said they're on board with this?
Yes, and last season, last, or this, this year, Morecroft, Hewlett, Upton, and Sundance all had girls post-Christmas. So the four of them wrestled each other and some, I think maybe some south, 'cause southeast Wyoming has done this. So your Cheyennes, your Lusk. I think southwest has done this.
So what's this gonna do for like regionals and state, then?
This is just middle school.
So middle school doesn't do regionals and state?
No, we would do a district, so we would have our culminating districts for boys before Christmas, and then we'd have a culminating district for girls. And it just rotates with us, so.
So actually, the, the additional cost is?
Minimal.
I mean, we're.
Yeah, it would be singlets, um, which
We had more.
Run about eighty dollars, and I'm thinking with what we bought last year, we might need five more, maybe ten at the most to begin with, and then officials would be a, a small addition.
Brad.
Tyler. If, if I may, I mean, singlets, it doesn't matter when you use them. So I mean, that, I wouldn't even necessarily say that that impacts the, whether you're wearing them in November or January. You just, you need everybody to have a uniform.
Yeah.
Brad? Okay. Anyone have questions or comments? So we'll put that on our next agenda.
Yeah, okay. That would be my recommendation.
So my, yeah, my re, my recommendation, Madam Chair, would be is, under new business at the next board meeting, we would recommend to the board for the change of that season.
Thank you, Carrie.
Thank you.
All right, any other visitors' comments? Seeing none? Next up is the consent agenda. It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? I would just say thank you to the, the wrestling coaches who were with us since the beginning of girls' wrestling. Because that's been kind of a momentous thing for the state and for our students. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carried. We have no old business, new business, future planning. Mr. LaCroy?
Madam Chair, if it's okay with you, I, I think I will turn it over to Angie and then she can walk you down the list.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And Brad. So you'll just have to, so I just go through the list again? Is that, or do we? I don't.
Sir, I, I don't remember.
Give it a whirl. I can screw it up as good as anyone. So, Madam Chair, my first recommendation to the board, and it'd be the first of approximately seventeen, I would recommend that the board continue to cover the district cost to the medical insurance, which was nine percent. To stay consistent with where the district is play, picking up for the employee now. And that new cost or new monies is approximately a hundred and seventy thousand dollars.
It's been moved and seconded to have the district pay for the nine percent increase in medical insurance. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carried.
Madam Chair, my second recommendation to the board would be for the district to allow certified steps, which are reflected on the teacher pay scale. That new money amount is roughly thirty-five thousand two hundred.
It's been moved and seconded to approve paying for certified staff to move a step for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carried.
My next recommendation would be add to the certified base the amount of seven hundred and fifty dollars. And that result in new money is seventy-eight thousand dollars.
It's been moved and seconded to increase the certified base by seven hundred and fifty dollars. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carried.
My next recommendation, Madam Chair, is to allow those that can move lanes for the certified staff to do so, i.e. the intent to advance in that reflection of the new money in the budget is three thousand dollars.
It's been moved and seconded to approve lanes for certified staff. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carried.
Next recommendation is for classified staff, which would be allow, move on a step reflecting in, in roughly new money in the budget of thirty-seven thousand two hundred dollars.
It's been moved and seconded to allow classified staff to move a step. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carried. Number six.
And Madam Chair, please feel free to correct me, but my, my next recommendation is for classified steps of thirty-five cents? Is that correct?
Yes.
So that would be my recommendation. And that amount to the new budget would be... Help me. Thirty-eight thousand dollars.
It's been moved and seconded to increase classified steps by thirty-five cents. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carried. Number seven.
Next recommendation would be for the high school athletic budget, and it is to accommodate the Wyoming High School activity, adding the shot clock in the years of twenty-six, twenty-seven. So this is a preparatory kind of a, uh, an add in that change to the budget, new money is around three thousand dollars.
It's been moved and seconded to increase the high school athletic budget to accommodate shot clock officials. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carried. Number eight.
Madam Chair, and this is a little bit of a conflict of interest, but I'm gonna go forward regardless. So my recommendation to the board for the administrative increase is, is a thousand dollars.
I will add to that, that that's a total of seventy-four hundred dollars.
Thank you.
It's been moved and seconded to increase the, the administrator's base by one thousand dollars. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carried. Number nine.
And Madam Chair, I have two notes here, so my recommendation would be to increase the base for directors. And I have two numbers here. I have the seven fifty and a thousand, and I don't know which one the board.
A thousand.
Thousand. So for the directors, the increase to the base of a thousand dollars, that resulting in roughly nine thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars to the budget.
It's been moved and seconded to increase the base for directors by one thousand dollars. Increase the base for directors by one thousand dollars. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carried.
What was also really cool about the lower chord meet is that sophomore Adam Butler ran the three hundred hurdles that day, because that's, that was Laura's signature race, and that's the signature race of the, of the track meet, and he won it. And so it was awfully nice that, that we had a Newcastle athlete win the three hundred meter hurdles. And he doesn't usually run them either. He usually runs the one-tens and hadn't actually put a lot of effort into working on the three hundred. So, he was pretty proud of being able to, you know, come out and do well and then win that race.
That was probably, that was probably right around the time we put out the story on Aiden, so knowing those two boys, Adam was probably a little motivated to say, hey, somebody look at me this week. So good, glad, just glad to hear he was successful there.
Yeah, and the Butlers and the Chords also are good family friends, so it meant a lot to him, so that was great.
Is that the first? Is that the first time someone from Newcastle's gotten it?
Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carried. Number ten.
So Madam Chair, this is, this is a recommendation based on some changes in which the district has recently received from the Schools Facilities Department. And to best meet the safety needs of, of the district, I would recommend the increase to the general fund major maintenance, not major maintenance from the state, but general fund major maintenance to increase that budget a hundred thousand dollars of general fund.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the general fund maintenance budget to accommodate preventative maintenance con, contracts, et cetera. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carried.
Madam Chair, this one is really to reflect the ongoing needs of the upgrading of our buses. And a lot of this is sort of catch-up from when we had the fire several years ago. But I would recommend to the board to make an adjustment to the transportation budget under general fund of seventy-five thousand dollars for a wide range of different vehicle slash buses in need.
It's been moved and seconded to allocate general fund money to the transportation budget. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carried. Number twelve.
Yes, Madam Chair, my recommendation to the board in, in trying to keep some pace with some wellness plans is that we allow employees to have added to their key card weight room usage. We feel that this is a privilege. As long as they're willing to sign the agreement, they're able to use that on the hours that accommodate their needs. And we will handle those that don't, don't handle the benefit very well differently. And we will handle those that don't, don't handle the benefit very well differently. But I think it's a great move, um, for our wellness program for our staff.
It's been moved and seconded to open the weight room, um, for all hours use for employees with their key card. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carried. Thirteen. Oh.
I think I'm on fourteen, Madam Chair.
Yes, fourteen, sorry.
If you're okay with that. Um, I would recommend to the board, um, to allocate general fund money to be moved into Special Olympics, which is no longer able to be funded by state funding, uh, in the amount of ten thousand dollars to continue that program for students.
It's been moved and seconded to allocate general fund money for Special Olympics participation by our students. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carried. Fifteen.
Madam Chair, my recommendation to the board is for the three building secretaries to adjust that base by three dollars an hour. The total to the new budget is twenty thousand dollars.
It's been moved and seconded to increase the building secretary's base by three dollars. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carried.
So Madam Chair, the next recommendation is not new monies, but reallocated monies and activities. Um, and with that proposal, I ask that we reallocate roughly fourteen thousand dollars to the middle school and high school coaching extra duty contracts.
To add two hundred and fifty dollars to each contract.
I'm sorry, yes.
It's been moved and seconded to increase middle school, high school coaching extra duty contracts by two hundred and fifty dollars. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carried. We have a couple of, we have food, um, our, our lunch and food service program.
Um, my recommendation to the board would be starting, um, the twenty-five, twenty-six school year that we no longer continue the federal lunch program for grade six through twelve. And the amount of money needed to make that transition is a hundred thousand dollars.
Okay.
It's been moved and seconded to transition middle school and high school food service to not participating in the federal program any longer, starting in twenty-five, twenty-six. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. Motion is carried.
I think that's all I have.
Insurance one, or is that?
Don't have any notes to reflect that, so maybe Angie could help me out with that, please.
Uh, the recommendation would be to, um, cover the health insurance for twelve month, twelve month employee, directors.
Right.
Um.
IT director.
IT director, maintenance director, and transportation director.
And with one other possibility, depending on what happens with company, yeah, the other budgets that, I mean, that's, sorry, CeeLo, that's a really bad way to word that.
With one of them pending, um, future board action.
Yeah, a change of duties. Yep. All right. I'm sorry, I got lost. Did I have a motion? All right. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carried. Thank you very much, leadership team.
And thank you, um, Madam Chair and Board. And, and just so everyone knows, um, it's never, it's never enough. I mean, we all, uh, we all value people more than just what we can do. Um, but understanding where we are with the loss of ADM, um, and the uncertainty of some federal monies. Um, I mean, you're approximately six hundred thousand dollars of new money that, that you just allocated for people to take care of children.
And, and one comment I did forget to make in the food, the food service, um, discussion was that we had already, we've already had to supplement the food service every year from general fund up to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So. All right. Third quarter financial report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, in front of you, you have the third quarter financial report. Um, it's from January first to March thirty-first of this year. Um, you'll see the cash summary shows the bank balances at the end of March. Um, the state foundation payments totaled a one thousand nine hundred twenty, uh, one million, nine hundred twenty-nine thousand eighty-nine dollars and seventy-one cents for this quarter. The county tax payments totaled one million, two hundred and seventy-four thousand, eight hundred and fifty-nine dollars and fifty-nine cents for the general fund. Fourteen thousand, four hundred and fifty-eight dollars and three cents for the rec fund and seven thousand, two hundred and twenty-eight dollars and eighty-seven cents for the BOCES fund. Um, the expenditures are all on track. Um, capital construction is in here, but there are zero projects with that right now. There's just a ba- a little bank balance in there. Um, food service, as of March thirty-first, has supplemented, uh, the general fund has supplemented a thou- uh, sorry, it's been a long day. A hundred and five thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars for the food service account to cover wages so far. Uh, the rec district, um, the revenue is from the one mil. Includes the pool utilities, quarter pool utilities, pool wages, pool manager extra duty wages, and the community rec director wages. EWC, BOCES is the revenue from the half mil. Expenditures are the concurrent and dual concurrent, or dual enrollment classes and a portion of Kins wages, which get taken, paid at the end of the school year once there's, see what the balance is in that account. Uh, major maintenance fund is from interest income and from the state construction payments. And the expenditures are based on the facility plan, um, and they're paid quarterly. Um, everything looks like it's on track for expenditures and revenue. Are there any questions?
It's been moved and seconded to approve the third quarter financial report. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carried. Thank you, Angie. Okay.
Are you ready for me?
And the legislature brought us, uh,
Yes, a gift.
A gift. Another lovely gift.
So truly, it's, um, this is one of those, this is just one of those deals. I mean, you can do it in three readings if you would like. But Madam Chair and Board, I would recommend that you adopt, um, policy EJ, um, for sex designated facilities. Um, and just so you know, it actually went into law March third, so I'm a little slow.
You're moving to approve on a third reading approval type thing?
I don't, my recommendation would not to be three readings.
Okay, that's what I want to make sure. Okay.
That's my recommendation.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to adopt policy EJ, sex designated facilities. And I really dislike that wording, the title that they gave it. Um, but the legislature, that's what they named this, and so, uh, we have no option to change that. Um, is there any discussion? Besides my comments. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carried.
The new store. This is the one-stop shop. We have a pharmacy. We have a bootlegger's liquor. The deli, the food that you can get at a lunchtime is so amazing. The coffee shop. Certain Friday mornings, there's thirty people sitting here in all these chairs. This is the hub for people to come and visit, have their coffee, have their doughnuts. It's amazing what this area has done. Totally amazing.
But the legislature, that's what they named this, and so, uh, we have no option to change that. Um, is there any discussion? Besides my comments. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carried. Certified recommendation.
I would recommend to the board Angela Stanton, uh, as a district wide nurse.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Angela Stanton as the district wide nurse. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carried. Welcome, Angela. Classified resignation.
I would recommend to the board the resignation of Brent Johnson as a bus route driver and permission to post.
Move to approve.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the classified resignation from Brent Johnson as bus route driver and post position. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carried. Item F.
Madam Chair, I would recommend to the board for permission to go out for a food service director with the idea that we are going to cook the beef now that we've walked away from the federal program.
It's been moved and seconded to post position for a food service director. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carried. Is Abby there?
Chair, I do not believe Addie, uh, she is not there. Um, so I would just recommend to the board that we table this executive session and give everyone a little bit of a break to get home early.
Okay.
And I am not prepared to present anything to the board.
May I have a motion to table the executive session to our next meeting? It's been moved and seconded to t- table this executive session, uh, to our next meeting on the twelfth, which will also be an early start. Is there any discussion?
What time?
We're starting at,
The twelfth.
On the twelfth, we're starting at five.
At five.
Because we're doing our board self-evaluation. Okay, is there any, oh, that's the only discussion. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carried. Directors, got any IT news for us? No. Angie, do you got anything else to tell us?
I do not, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Sonia?
The only thing I would add for tonight is just an invite. There is a community consolidated grant meeting tomorrow night at four o'clock. So here, so if you can come, that'd be great. So, thank you very much. That's all I have unless you have questions for me.
And I clicked that on my email, and it's making me sign into an account I don't have.
Okay, well, thanks for that. We'll work on fixing that.
Okay.
For whatever that is. But yeah, there is a, um, um, a survey or a form that you can sign that should be on the website that if you're unable to come, you can still give feedback. Uh, the tricky part about this one is usually we have a, uh, we will review what we have spent for the year and what activities are typically done and allocated with federal funding. Um, we typically have allocations for next year by this time. We currently do not. So as far as what we continue doing, I mean, that's, that's in the unknown field right now. So anyway. But yeah, so the invitation's open tomorrow at four.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions for Sonia?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Adam?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't have anything unless you guys have questions.
Are you gonna have to pass no again this year?
What's that?
Are you gonna have to pass no again this year?
Oh, let's hope so.
This school year.
Oh, not this school year, probably not. Hopefully this year at some point, will you?
Yeah. Braby?
Thank you. I don't have anything unless you have questions for me.
Thank you. Bryce?
Thank you, Madam Chair. No report either.
Tyler?
No report, but thank you guys for making difficult decisions and taking care of people. I appreciate that. We all do.
Thank you. Brad?
Um, again, Madam Chair and, and Board, I, I would like to, to thank you. Um, not only are they difficult decisions, but they're decisions that have a lot of moving pieces. It's not a real easy time to be on a board, so thank you for that. Um, the only other item that I have for you is in trustee Fitzwater's, um, basket are some ideas um, that I received from the elementary on a reading corner, I hope. And if they're not there,
Oh.
Um, CeeLo will help find them.
Okay.
So, um, I think that's sort of what the board had, maybe in mind. But after that, um, I have no further information. Um, I was hoping to have a little bit more information on the gun policy, uh, maybe in some direction with that. I don't, but I will tell you, I am still leaning, um, towards the idea of not having a policy if that is feasible with our attorney. Um, because the way that I read the state statute along with the guide policy that came out, there is nothing in the guide policy in which we are going to be able to, to manage, i.e. ask or request of any information. Um, and I don't know why we would hold our staff members, um, to a different level than a state law which allows everyone, and as long as everyone's safe, I think it's a lot like a driver's license. Um, if it's really concealed, we'll never know. If it's not, it's gonna be a law enforcement issue, not gonna be a school issue. So I share that with you so you have ample time to think. Um, and we can discuss that in great detail coming down the road.
Yep. All right. Any questions for the superintendent? Seeing then, did, do you think student council had anything to tell us, Bryce?
I do not, except you're probably urgently invited to the prom.
Yeah.
And I'll add to that. Post-prom, if anybody wants to volunteer for post-prom, we're looking for volunteers. Thanks, Sean.
Where are you doing it?
At the high school.
At the high school?
High school, middle school, same area. We're setting up at Saturday morning, I think at nine thirty. Nine twenty-five, and then start, doors open at eleven, so.
Okay. Thank you. Do you have an espresso machine there? That would help me stay up that late. I haven't stayed up that late for a while. All right, board reports. You have anything? Yes.
I did have a current call concerned about the parking lot situation at the grade school. And I'm just curious, can we get a phone number for somebody at the state to where, I mean, I don't have any answers for them. Is there some number I could give them to get them answers as to why we seem to be at a standstill to where nothing is ever gonna change out there, or?
The change they made after we met with them last time was this speed limits, we we requested them to, that they repaint it and add a turn lane, a long right-hand turn lane. They chose not to do that, but if we're still having any safety issues on the highway, then we should be noting those and call the district traffic engineer. Because that's gonna get you more rapid response, so.
Well, I just would like to have a phone number to where I could give it to them, cause I don't have any answers and if I don't have answers, I hope I can get you to somebody with answers. And they were also concerned because I thought the last time we had concerned that the law enforcement was gonna try to be out there at like bus times, and I specifically asked, was there any law enforcement there and they said no.
Was this a close call?
They were very concerned that, yeah, it was stacked up in the turn lane and think, apparently something went on. I, I didn't get details, but they said that they were really concerned, they thought somebody was gonna get killed that day and that's why they reached out. So I, once again, I, I just.
Yeah, and if, if members of the public let them know other than just the board members, cause I mean, it took us, what? Three, four years to get them to change the speed limit. Brandy?
And I will tell you, it, it does get backed up on the highway like right before we get start dismissal, but it's not like it was, you know, when it was clear back to the bus, we never go back to the bus loop anymore and we've gotten pretty quick, even though Mr. Hoffman likes to call on the radio and keep track of our time, but we get those kids pretty loaded and out quickly. I mean, we're usually done by three twenty-five at the very latest, so.
Okay.
Well, sometimes we go a little longer, but that's, that's our average, so.
Sometimes it's slippery, huh?
Yeah.
All right.
And I, I, I did share the number. Um, that's the Y O dot number in which I last last had communications with was there, and I don't remember the name of.
It maybe it just. The safety engineers tend to move around quite a lot, so it could be a new one too.
I al, I will also, as far as the law enforcement goes, they were here like at the beginning of the year, they came and watched a little bit and, you know, tried to come up with other ideas, they didn't have any either, but we haven't had anybody out there regularly like we did last year, so. In the mornings, yes, for pickup, no.
Okay. All right, future agenda items, advertise an early start on the twelfth for our board self evaluation and if you haven't turned that into CeeLo, please try to get it to her by Friday. So she can compile all of our comments and scores. Yes, that is a Monday. Okay. And we will also um, have an executive session uh, for the issue that we tabled tonight. Any other information or future agenda items? Okay, discussion items, the proposed high school activities association name, image likeness policy.
Yeah, so just to briefly update the board, there's, there's been a little bit of confusion, apparently the activities association heard from the activities directors and they moved the policy on to um, second reading. Um, from the superintendents group, I'm not sure exactly where the school boards association um, is, but there was a lot of question about clarity in the, the policy. Um, there was also, I guess, some, quite a bit of confusion that does a local district that is not in agreement with the name, image, likeness policy have the right to opt out? Um, I was hoping to have all those answers for you, I do not. Um, but when I do receive that um, information and clarity, I'll make sure I get that out to the board and then if the board would like to um, write a letter directly to the high school activities association, we can do so. Um, my understanding is it's not going to be on a three reading, it's gonna be on a two reading basis and it has already went through the first reading and it was approved. So, time is gonna be of the essence. Um, and I'm hoping I can get that out to you tomorrow morning fairly quickly. Um, I will just briefly share my concerns to you is um, I, I think it was a very poorly written policy, but I, I'm not a real good policy guy anyway. Um, but my biggest concern is, is um, I think it's caused quite a bit of um, disconnect and, and hasn't really helped college sports or college athletes the way it was supposed to. Um, again, I think this is another thing, whether we wanna talk about three referees, shot clocks or whatever. Um, we continue to try to push these high school athletes into a college mode. Um, and, and where this one, I think, really could pit athlete against athlete on the same team. Um, and without the clarity that I think it needs, I, I don't see where it's gonna benefit high school athletics. That's just my thoughts and if anyone would like to disagree, I respect that. Um, but I, I know, I, I, I keep reading the horror stories of these young athletes that, you know, are making millions and then forget that somebody's gotta pay taxes on millions. Um, and again, I, I just don't understand why there's an urgency at the high school level to get there. That's all I have, Madam Chair, I could ramble for quite a while, but.
I will add that these are kids and they're amateurs and I think there are some unintended consequences that are not addressed in the policy that they, uh, plus the draft anyway, they may have changed something on first reading, but does anybody else have? I, I'd really like to hear your opinion because um, we may have to do a letter. Well, we should do a letter in the next forty-eight, or at least by Monday, I would think.
Say, I think it probably needs to, it probably needs to be on an email form at least by Friday.
By Friday, yeah. Paul?
I guess I live under a rock, I don't know what big thing precipitated this policy to even have to come into fruition. And to me, it just strikes me as a solution looking for a problem. I mean, they're high school kids. I, I, I don't see that we have these big sponsors or images anywhere that I've been, but granted, I don't run in the big circles.
Um, so, uh, here's my thirty cents worth this one. Um, I'm assuming because other states have already um, been down this road, that the activities association thought it would be beneficial to, to get out in front of it until it was a big issue. Um, so, my understanding is in states like Florida, California, Texas, um, they've already had these kinds of policies in place. Um, and so by getting out in front of it, it was to be proactive. Um, and again, I, uh, i- if, if it's a policy and it, it's, it has to be done, it's gotta have a lot more clarity in it for me because to me, I read some of that and I, 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 I don't know if that means I, if I take, if I'm an athlete and I am going to wear your brand for a amount of money um, still to maintain my man, my amateur status, does that mean then later down the road, I, I can't work for you? Or if I work for you, is that part of my loss of amateur status? Don't know if that means I, if I take, if I'm an athlete and I am going to wear your brand for a amount of money um, still to maintain my man, my amateur status, does that mean then later down the road, I, I can't work for you? Or if I work for you, is that part of my loss of amateur status? Um, there were just a lot of different questions, I think. Adam Chair, did you receive the letter from the board at Campbell County?
I do.
Um, could you share that with the other board members?
Yes, I will.
That was probably one of the.
Forward that to you alternate.
Um, that'll give you a little bit better understanding of where their board was with it. Um, I've also heard that, you know, maybe it was driven more by your four A schools than it was your smaller schools. I don't know if there's any truth to that. Um, I just know that, you know, right now, sports entertainment has become big business for, for young athletes. Um, I think we already have enough dynamics in young athletes right now, I don't know if it helps alleviate any of those dynamics. My biggest thing is I'll use a football example. I know that you're at least getting, you know, a thousand dollars to have, I don't know, some kind of.
Whirlwind services on his shirt.
Whirlwind, yeah, so Sean's gonna sponsor you, you're the running back, I'm the grunt on the line that has the block for you. Um, do I have to block for you that hard now that he's not gonna give me any money?
So my question is, I, once again, I haven't seen a football uniform with hurricane services on it or anything else. I mean, are they doing that?
This would be the proposal to start that. And it can be any activity, it doesn't have to just be a sport activity.
No, yeah.
Um, I guess the example that I was told, it, apparently it's fairly popular in high school rodeo.
There's lots of sponsorship stuff goes on there.
Okay, so it, it fed a little bit off of, of, of that. Um, apparently, and they've had pretty good success with that in, in the high school rodeo situations or arena, is that what they call it?
You guys have coached, do you have anything you could share with us that we're not thinking about?
Um, I would just say, when I read the policy, I thought it was very restrictive and didn't really give a lot of opportunity for kids to earn money. And as far as like anything in a doggy uniform or within the school or on school grounds, none of that is like can happen at school grounds, like there couldn't be a, you use whirlwind as the example, so I'll keep that going, there couldn't be a a whirlwind um, athlete photo shoot in a Newcastle doggy jersey or on Newcastle or in the dome. Um, so it seemed very restrictive, maybe I misread it. Um, you know, maybe it's one of those things, it's a restrictive policy that becomes less restrictive and less restrictive and less restrictive, so slippery slope conundrum. Um, but right now, as I read it personally, I don't think it changes much.
Yeah, my concern was donors, so let's say we've had donors pay for the seniors basketball banners. Um, and they're wearing a doggy uniform. And it says whirlwind services paid for that. If are, are we in trouble, trouble having those two things together if we gift that banner to that kid when they leave? Cause that seems like they're getting a benefit, but it had the doggy uniform and the person who paid for it. Those are the kinds of little things I thought someone could complain about that I didn't feel like we're quite covered in there. Other.
I do not have an answer to that question, that's a great question. Um, Brad already talked about this, though, if you watch the way this is playing out at the college level, nobody has a flipping clue what they're doing. And so I think we're gonna try to do that now at the high school level and hope for the best, but I mean, I, there's there's settlements happening at the government, love, federal government level, trying to figure out how they're supposed to manage all this at the college level, so I'm sure whatever policy WHSA comes up with is gonna have something missing that we'll figure out later.
Tell the rest.
And it's gonna be an exciting time.
Implementation could be interesting. Do you know? Anyone else? All right. I reminded you about board self evaluations and the early start meeting, so this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen, rec boards next.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I'll call the Eastern Weston County Recreation Board to order. Um, you have an agenda in front of you, do I have a motion to approve the agenda? Is there any discussion on the agenda? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, the same sign. Agenda's approved, recognitions. Um, I'm gonna make one recognition here for this rec board. Um, I'm gonna discuss it with you guys and a little bit more and for your information part. Um, Adam coming in on a weekend to fix toilets during a rec thing going on at the school, I do wanna thank you, Adam, for doing that. Um, that's all I got for recognitions, I'll let you guys know a little bit more about that here in a second. See, may I also have any recognitions? Move on the visitors, comment, staff input, special programs. Seeing none, we'll move on to action items, you have a consent agenda in front of you, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? And properly moved and seconded, is there any discussion on this? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, same sign. Consent agenda's approved, I have no old business. Um, number three A, future planning. I don't really have anything for that, I don't know. Angie, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It was the, um, I brought it up earlier, the uh, increase for the current extra duty contract for the pool manager.
So if that's approved in the meeting before, do we have to approve it here then?
It, it, it wasn't approved, I just brought it up in that meeting, cause it's a rec, it's rec fund, it's not general fund.
So the reason Mr. Chair, it wasn't part of that is this would be a new allocation to recreation money. Um, which the, before one is, is your general fund, so this is your rec mill money. Um, and then I'll let Angie um, go ahead and and give you the details.
The, this, right now, the extra duty contract for the pool manager is the seven thousand three hundred and eighty dollars. And a proposal was written to increase it by two thousand five hundred and twenty dollars. And the, the recommendation, I mean, suggestion would be to, because of the decrease in the um, funding, cause we'll, we're gonna take about a ten thousand dollar, fifteen thousand dollar decrease in our tax money, our levy, so that we would just that we would not recommend it.
So we'll keep it the same?
Keep it the same, and, and that's where we were thinking about like closing, maybe on the days that's really slow or, you know, there's other ways we can do to try to cut some costs due to the
Okay.
decrease in funds.
Um, do you have a recommendation, do we need to pass that then? So since we're keeping it the same, we shouldn't have to vote on that, is that correct then?
Yeah, there was no recommendation.
Yeah, it, so.
Okay.
It was more discussion because I wanted to make sure it was out on the table that.
Sure, I do, what, I would like the board, the rec board, to entertain the idea that knowing that your rec mill is not going to generate as much money, knowing that you're going to have more and more demands uh, on older facilities, um, not just the pool, but other ones. Um, I think what we should ask our people to do is bring us some recommendations to the board. is bring us some recommendations to the board on ways that we can cut back. Whether that be, you know, one night a week, the pool isn't open. Or maybe it's the idea that, as you mentioned earlier, when you're gonna have a big event here and you charge a gate, that a portion of that gate or some kind of usage fee goes to the district to help cover the additional cost for maintenance and custodial. If nothing else, utilities and supplies. Um, if you're coming in to fix a toilet, that's usually toilet paper um issue. So I think instead of expanding, I think you should be looking at downsizing, would be my recommendation, Mr. Chair.
Okay. I am, apologize, I'm struggling with this, so I need to, I have a recommendation before us. Okay, so we'll discuss that on the next agenda then. Okay. Um, all right, so that'll be on the new one. Is there any other business besides that? Um, we'll move on to item F for your information. So I got this for you guys, so like I told you, Adam, come in two weekends ago. Something like that, when there was a volleyball event here. I do wanna let you guys know, I am gonna sit down with Teresa when I find time. And we are gonna go over the policies for the usage that the that we use for extra events, BAU events, whatever it is. I'd like to see that rewritten. Or amended in some way. Uh, I if we have some kind of maintenance incident like we had, and we have to call in an emergency plumber, I don't think we necessarily should be covering the cost of that if somebody is, you know, charging for people to come in and use the facility, I think it would be nice to get some of that back. So that's where I'm going at with that. Um, I will have further stuff, more stuff for you later. I just need to sit down with Teresa. Sean?
Thank you. So AAU volleyball, they do charge? It, like AAU wrestling, they used to charge. So AA volleyball, they charge to use our, but they, AAU keeps the money, but we don't get any, is that, is that room here? Okay.
I don't wanna speak out just from my experience, but I believe the club charges. AAU, you just pay a annual membership, and if depending on level, you could hold events. But, but then I think they pay a door fee for you to come in. I'm not a hundred percent for sure, but.
And, and the AAU club doesn't pay the school any money for the use of the facilities.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, yeah. So, and I'd like to see that change where, especially if we have something happen, and if nothing happens, you know,
deposit?
I'd like to see a deposit for something like that, but I would also like to see an actual usage fee. And then that money can be set aside in case something else happens, is what I'd like to see in the future, just so everybody's aware of that. Adam? So do you want a little backstory? Does everybody know what happened?
No.
Okay, so it was a Saturday, Sunday tournament. So Saturday, mid-morning, get a call. Toilet water, women's bathroom, running all over the floor, um, from the custodians. Call, get a plumber down there. He got the toilet unplugged. Got a call three or four hours later that day, so now it's late afternoon. Different bathroom, women's bathroom, plugged. He couldn't make it that day, so we come in at seven o'clock Sunday morning, cause it was also Sunday to get, get it fixed before the tournament started. And he, he got that one unplugged as well. So that's a little backstory on that. My thought on the deposit thing is if you charged them whatever, um, gave half it back to them, put half it in a fund, that's what could pay for your gym floors. They use our concession stands, they're making money on it, granted, it's our kids. Generally, but it's other people as well. But then we're the ones that are paying the cost to redo the floors in there and buy new equipment and, and yeah, paying, we're paying the heating, air conditioning, all the supplies, cleaning supplies. So thank you, Adam, if everybody's okay with.
Angie, then would that be fairly simple for you to have an account for the rec board that took in deposits and then refunded half of them back?
Yes, we could do that.
Okay, just wanted to double check.
I say we don't refund any of their money back, cause the AAU is a multimillion dollar business, so we just keep whatever. We set a fee of four hundred dollars. And that's what we keep.
But, so, so you know that we won't be charging AAU, we'll be charging our clubs.
Little clubs, yeah.
So like, and I'll speak on like with basketball, our AAU fee a year was three, four hundred dollars. Right? That gave us gold level membership to where we could hold tournaments. And then, and the biggest thing about that, it had the insurance to cover all of that, whether it be practices or holding an event. After that, them clubs don't give any money, they that's yours. So they paid that four hundred dollars, holding that tournament and taking door money. That all went to just the local club. So I wanna make sure we know that, we don't wanna take all the money from our local clubs by any means, but we definitely need to be able to recoup money if something does happen to our facilities. Hence getting an emergency plumber. Cause I mean, right now, we're just, we're prob- that bill, we're just kinda eating. So, and I don't think that's right, so. Okay, is there any other discussion, Billy?
Yeah, I'm sure you guys seen that email, but Bryce did send out to the I, the, I guess, local clubs or whatever about the concession and the parking, so we should be hearing back on that. Um, he did include Sandy and Pam's number, so we should be, they should be getting some ideas on that.
Awesome, thank you. Anything else for our information? Any discussion items? Seeing none, meeting adjourned.